Calling this meeting to order, we got no Anton, but everybody else is here. Open forum, you're on the agenda, nobody else here, must be the beautiful weather. Close the open forum, move on to the consent agenda. One atypical thing on the consent agenda, and that is the consumption and display permit for the Curling Club. This is just a matter of course for every year. They've always had their act in order and their applications in order, and they've always respected all the rules that they need to respect. So we put it on the consent agenda. We can certainly pull it for discussion. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Second now.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sure the Curling Club will be happy to have that renewed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Fantastic. Alright, so moving right along. Calendar parking discussion, come on up. We've got the county engineer, and Lake County and Cook County engineer, Kristin Foster. Make sure I don't mess that up.
No, you're right.
Ms. Foster. So I was wondering if you'd just give us a summary of what you're thinking. We saw the, in the packet, we saw the draft ordinance concept for that. Is there anything else that we need to know about this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, City Staff, and other stakeholders. The ordinance, the draft ordinance that is in your packet started with an example from the city of Stillwater, if anyone is wondering where that originated from. We did look at other cities as well, but of course Minneapolis and St. Paul are different scales than smaller communities, so at the end, that is where that draft originated from. As I understand it, I'm aware that calendar parking has come up in town before, and it's also my understanding that we're observing more parking on the streets now compared to what may have been 10 or 20 or more years ago, which I think is good news for the city overall, although it does present us some challenges for snow removal, especially in certain locations. Now, this ordinance started with a discussion of should parking be banned on some narrow streets, or should the county stop plowing some roads because quite frankly, we can't get through them some days. And now I've been here during Fisherman's Picnic, and I can't in good conscience recommend a parking ban. I don't think that solves the objective that we're after, and I would say the same thing about year-round calendar parking. What I'm really here to talk about, and what I'm willing to come back for a future meeting to talk more about, is how we manage parking during the winter season in particular, when we're trying to remove snow from the streets. Now, some folks know that I live in Silver Bay. Where I live, the city of Silver Bay prohibits overnight parking from October 15th to May 15th. On the other hand, there's ample off-street parking in Grand Murray, I mean in Silver Bay. That is a benefit that we don't have in most areas of Grand Murray, so I don't think it's fair to expect residents or visitors to park off-street all the time with an overnight parking ban. There's also the option of snow emergencies for folks who have lived in or visited Minneapolis or St. Paul. In that case, someone actually declares a snow emergency, and residents are given a certain amount of time to remove their cars from the streets when that happens. However, that takes resources that I don't believe we have here. It takes more media communications than what we have here. It essentially takes 24/7 operations for the most part. So this is, I think this is a similar idea. What I would say, from the county's perspective, from the enforcement plan, we don't plan to tow, or we wouldn't request a tow unless there's a vehicle parked in violation of calendar parking and inhibiting snow removal. So although it's not set up quite like a snow emergency, because I don't know who would be the one to declare that, or how we would make sure to get the word out to absolutely everybody in a timely manner, but it is, I think we enter into it, this request, with the same intent. There is a, looking at some of the details of the draft ordinance, as it stands right now, there would be a period of time from 7:00 PM to midnight where people would be encouraged to move their cars to the other side of the street. Those hours, I don't think are set in stone by any means. That is what came from the example ordinance, but there, so if today was the 5th, I would be parked on the odd side of the street, somewhere between 7:00 PM and midnight. I'd want to move my car to the even side of the street, so that on the morning of the 6th, I'm parked on the even side of the street. So it goes in line with the odd and even days. There is a provision included for the downtown area. Now, this area is a bit different. Crews use loaders to remove snow from the parking areas downtown before the business is open for the business day. So in that case, the draft ordinance includes a provision requesting that people do not park overnight between the hours of 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM. Again, that could, I think those hours could be discussed, but the reason that the downtown area differs from the rest of the streets is because different equipment is used to clear those parking areas for the businesses. Extending a little bit on the public information plan and the towing plan, should we decide to move forward with this ordinance or a variation thereof someday, I think it's important to all stakeholders to promote voluntary compliance. What that means to us at the county, as we've talked about it at the Public Safety and Transportation Committee, is not to enforce right away at the beginning of a snow season. Instead, put reminder cards on folks' windshields saying, "Reminder, Grand Murray has calendar parking in effect, and please move your vehicle or you may get towed in the future." So that's a piece of it. Also, with the advent of Facebook and our good working relationship with WATIP and the availability of newspaper announcements in town, we would strive to get the word out at the beginning of each season. Some folks may have seen the Facebook video that went out in, at the end of December here, just as a, encourage people to move their vehicles from the streets, and that was very effective. Some might ask, "Why don't we just do that? Why don't we keep asking people to move their vehicles instead of considering an ordinance that could be enforced?" And to tell you the truth, that option was relatively effective, and that is what we would hope for in all future winters, however, it wasn't fully effective. If there were some sort of parking regulations in place, I could give you a better idea of when the streets might be plowed curb to curb, at least for the roads that the county is responsible for winter maintenance along. Right now, there was a trailer that I can remember in particular that was not moved for most of the winter. So at least I would know that if it snows today, that street will probably be cleared curb to curb, in all likelihood, within the next couple of days. Right now, I can't tell you when we will have our streets plowed curb to curb, because I don't know when those vehicles are going to move. Now, calendar parking is a common system for other locales as well. I grew up on the Iron Range, it's a term that I'm familiar with from some cities up there as well, and I think that helps our area when it comes to communicating this information with visitors. That's another important stakeholder group besides looking at getting the word out to our residents and property owners year after year. We have to think about the people who might only be here for a day or two, our visitor community. As far as communicating with the lodging facilities and the vacation rentals in particular, we would ask that they post notices on their front desk, or along with their home check-in list, just notifying folks that Grand Murray does have calendar parking from this date to this date. So we have done quite a bit of talking about the different ways that we could encourage proactive compliance, and even if an ordinance were to go into effect, we would not plan to decrease those efforts. Along the towing side of it, if it did get to that point where somebody had to be requested to be towed because they were inhibiting snow removal for an extended period of time, that would be under the direction of law enforcement only. The current statutes that are in place provide that protection for residents, or drivers, or vehicle owners, that a peace officer or a parking officer has to prepare a written towing report before the vehicle could be towed, and that is written into the state law regarding towing. So it couldn't be towed at the operator's discretion, it would be towed only after law enforcement makes the call, if they're not able to get in touch with the person who's driving the vehicle. Now, there are lots of considerations, I understand, that come with considering a change such as this one, and fully open to any questions that you have, or that you hear from your constituents, or business owners, or residents, or anybody else. With that, I'll open it up if anyone has questions right off the bat.
Well, thanks for coming so well-prepared. That's really helpful for us to know different options. So it sounds to me like there's a variety of different ways that this could be done, and that calendar parking is one of the more hands-off ways of doing that, because it's just an expectation that's advertised and put out there, and then they just say, "Just park on this side on these days, park on this side on these days," and then if you don't do that, then there's enforcement activities that would happen, versus having there be a snow emergency that would have to be declared, or having there be something more, well, more complicated, like what they, sometimes they have to do down in the cities. I mean, does that seem, does that seem right?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's a great summary. Thank you.
Good gracious.
So formal.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't know. I don't know how to say it. I'm gonna blush.
Just take it in, people.
Does anybody else have, yeah, exactly. That's how it's supposed to be done.
Yeah, I just have one question about it. I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, you know, draft ordinance, you know, the one, paragraph C of that first portion where it says provision of this subdivision must not be enforced from 7:00 PM till midnight. Your thinking on that, your thoughts why that would be an exception to?
Counselor Kennedy, that period of time is there to allow people to move their vehicles from one side of the street or the other. That's simply the hours that Stillwater had. There's not a good rhyme or reason behind 7:00 PM to midnight, whether it was 7:00 PM to midnight, or 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, or 8:00 PM to midnight, or anything in between. I think there are a lot of options there. Of course, as someone who manages snow plowing operations, we are out there all day during the day, so I guess my recommendation would be that doesn't extend much earlier than, say, 5:00 PM.
And for the most part, you don't do snow plowing during those times.
At night, no.
You need to wait till later, later in the morning, or through the daytime hours. Isn't that right?
That is correct.
What are you looking at me for? Well, I was just saying, like, we could ask two of you, like, what time?
I don't do it.
Yeah, I mean, you know it, notice what time he goes.
I do notice what time he leaves.
Well, the city starts early in the morning, sometimes 2:00 or 3:00 AM.
For the downtown area, yeah. And I think a lot of times, the reason they start so early in the downtown area is because they don't have some kind of a rule for people not to park down there, so they do it when there's as few, as few a number of cars down there as possible.
They're trying to get it done before.
Business hours.
Or gets busy.
Well, this would actually help them out, because there's certain times when some of the hotels downtown, you know, their guests are parked on the street overnight, because there's no restriction against doing that. But there is, but there-
I think there is.
There is, but it's not enforced, and so-
Yeah, so really, what's nice about this ordinance is that the county's had a really thorough conversation with all the players about how enforcement of parking works, and now there's a concept and a plan for doing it, which is good, and in particular, if it's about snow removal, which is where we have, you know, 99% of our parking issues when it comes to maintenance stuff.
I mean, we've talked about this for a good number of years. I mean, every time we'd have a big snow winter, obviously becomes an issue, and there's not much snow, well, it's like the hole in the roof, doesn't leak when it doesn't rain, but, you know. But I think what we have to look at is, is this type of system that would benefit the community and make for more efficient snow removal, and, you know, I think personally it would, you know, it would make it easier to provide good snow removal and services that now if there's cars parked out there, it just creates a problem from the start of the winter till the end of the winter.
Have to go around them, yeah.
Not only going around them, but from my understanding, is when they don't get moved for a long time, and really large frozen chunks of snow build up, and a car is then moved, or a trailer, or what may be, those get pushed into people's driveways at times, and it's not a very popular thing.
Gotcha.
To which it's not the fault of those removing snow.
So the elements of this ordinance basically are odd days, odd side of the street, even days, even side of the street. There's some period of time where plowing isn't gonna happen, where it's not gonna be enforced, and then the penalty has to be in line with the state statute saying that a peace officer has to basically write a towing ticket, and then they can be towed.
Yes, that is correct.
So, seems pretty straightforward. With the understanding that at the beginning of the winter, we'll be given, like, warnings and being like, "Hey, hey, move your car, we're not gonna play nice when there's more snow."
Who's doing the warning then?
That's what I was-
Is that law enforcement, or is that? We haven't decided yet. City street people who are actually driving the streets that see a problem maybe potentially happening? It could be, though, it could be both of those parties. It could be city administrator or county engineering staff. It could be, really doesn't have to be, or it could be anybody.
Okay.
I'll just see what you can expect to do at work.
Yeah.
Well, we-
We will have a communication plan.
Would we invest in having calendar parking street signs that would be put up?
I'd prefer not to.
Like other cities?
I don't think the street signs help at all. I think people generally, I mean, there are 90-minute parking signs all over downtown, but nobody sees them or knows that.
Can you print it on utility bills or something like that?
Well, we can, we can make sure that every, seasonally, we've got a communication plan to roll out some sort of announcement system, and then again, like Kristin said, we'd start the season with some warnings. Really, we know this is not but a dozen or so really problem areas-
Right.
-where this is an issue, and so we'll be able, I think, to cure most of that with some hands-on, person-to-person contact and communications.
Right.
And then the rest of it's just habit-forming, which I think will, over time, will be pretty ingrained. I mean, if you do street signs, then you literally, I mean, where cities do that, every avenue off Highway 61 has a street sign that says "Calendar Parking Enforced," and it just starts to get kinda crazy with signs and stuff, and I don't know that people see what they do anymore.
Yeah, you could maybe put a sign at each end of the highway, just to let people know as they're coming into town, especially for visitors that wouldn't otherwise have a means to understand that.
Right.
Calendar parking, no reference to April 3rd.
The other thing that Kristin mentioned, which I think is a really important part of our communication strategy, is working with the hospitality industry, that visitors that are gonna come here and that might park on our streets are staying with somebody, and that person can work with us to make sure that all their guests know what the rules are as well.
So we have a couple of vacation rentals downtown. Do they have off-street parking?
They do.
For all their units?
It's my understand.
I think everybody that's running one does. They're not required to, and I don't know if you would count up the potential number of cars that could show up, that there's adequate off-street parking for all of them. And yet, the rules are what they are, so these folks are gonna have to figure that out.
Who making display signs in their businesses, or at their properties, too?
Well, you know, for my, for my business, it would be really simple, because whenever somebody makes a reservation with me, they get an automatic email that gets sent to them that says the house rules and everything like that, and it would just be, for me, it's as simple as putting an extra line in there that says, you know, "Calendar Parking When You're Here," and then when they check in, I just have it on my door. I think that it would, that's, for the few properties that have that as, you know, have street parking as available to their guests, I think that it won't take, it won't be very hard to get that communicated, I don't think, as long as the, as long as we have the buy-in from those, from those businesses.
Most businesses have a real vested interest in making sure that their customers' cars don't get towed, because that's gonna be a bad review.
Wouldn't be happy.
Totally true, yeah.
So the process for this is that if we are in agreement and wanna move this forward, is to call for a public hearing on consideration of this, or are you suggesting that we should just adopt this without any kind of public involvement?
No, I think there's a number of questions in here where we don't have any ownership of what the numbers are, and that public input might help us dial those in. You think about this 7 to midnight, and, you know, that should work for most people, but some people's schedules it doesn't work for, and just kinda hearing about that locally, if there's a lot of folks that feel one way or another, that'd be very useful. Plus, I think it's an opportunity for us to just let people know what's going on, even if we're not expecting input, for us to be communicating about this. So I would recommend that we do bring it back, have a public hearing, but that we actually also do some sort of rollout communications and engagement process, and Valerie and Patrick have already started kinda talking and thinking about that, so if, you know, if we came back in a month and put this on an agenda for consideration and called that a public hearing, we've really already missed this season, and, you know, early on in the season, Kristin and I sat down and started talking about this and decided that it really wasn't realistic to get this done for this year, but, you know, we wanted it placed.
Yeah, I mean, I think the timeliness is that if we can have the conversation while it's fresh in people's minds-
Absolutely.
That's the timeliness I think is important, because if we have a conversation in July, a lot of people are just gonna be-
Yeah, they won't remember, they won't know.
What are we talking about, snow removal for now? Won't be much importance, but I think people will grasp the issue knowing.
Especially coming off of this winter, where, you know, I mean, we've, we've had, we've had equipment out, you know, just about every day, cleaning up, cleaning up the corners, and, you know, we've had the MinDOT snow blowers up here. I mean, we've had some serious equipment up here to take care of the snow, so that we don't, so that we don't have dangerous road conditions, and this is just another step to go in that, in that way. So if we have consensus on the council, then we'll move forward with creating some kind of a public, public information reach-out about this, and then we can continue this process in the early spring here, so that we can know how we're gonna move forward.
Next month, we're gonna put it on the agenda, then?
Mm-hmm. Does that sound good? I think that's great. I think this is, this is gonna be really, really great. So, thank you for putting so much time into it, Kristin, and I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We know if we adopt this ordinance, you know, it's gonna be 25 inches of snow for the next, the next three years.
That seems to be the pattern.
Until we forget about it, and then, and then it'll come back.
That's right.
Awesome, so-
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's great. It's really nice to know the different, the different ways that we can solve that problem, too, like that there's different, different ways to write an ordinance on that. Continuing to move right along, in your packet, you have a letter to the Chair of the County, County Board of Commissioners, that is an invitation to engage in conversations on updating city-county agreements. Our purpose for this letter is mainly to proof it and to make sure that this is what we wanna be saying to the county, and then we will send this letter to the county, and then we will just open up those conversations for discussion. There are three agreements that, three major agreements that are listed in this, in this, this letter. One is law enforcement, one is street maintenance, and the other one is the county, or the community center agreement, and, and those, those three agreements are the ones that we would open with, and then, and then see where it leads to. So that's how the, how the letter is written. Open this up for discussion if anyone has any suggestions about how we should, how we should, you know, open up this conversation. This is, you know, just a pretty straightforward way of saying, "Hey, we identify this as a priority, we mean to do this. These are the, these are the agreements, they haven't been redone for a long time, let's talk." So, if there isn't any objection to it, then we'll just move forward with the letter as written, otherwise, we can, we can amend it.
Please reproof it, there's typos.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I've only seen two. Did anybody count one and two?
When I find them, I stop reading, 'cause it tells me it's not something that I would send out, so.
We put in, we put in a couple. See, that's why it says "draft."
I know.
Be funny if you spelt "draft" wrong.
I know it is.
G-R-
The computer does that, you don't.
A-E-F-T.
That comes through words.
Yeah, so, does anybody have anything they'd like to add or subtract from this, apart from proofreading? See, this has my name on it, so I have to proof it before I, before it goes out anyway, right?
I think it's a good, good starting point for this conversation, you know, and obviously we need to sit in the same room with the County Board, and, but know what our interests are.
If you recall our last conversation, the County Board was looking to put a small group together to meet with another small group, and the council was much more interested in having the whole council involved in the conversation, so we're mentioning that upfront, and I certainly think that's appropriate for an opener, just to kinda see where, where things lie. I don't know that having 15 people in the room together is the best strategy to work out all the issues, but to identify them anyway, and to talk about a strategy for working out the issues, it'd be nice to have the whole County Board there.
I think that makes sense, 'cause when you have, we're actually able to do something when we have both boards present, and if there's, if both boards are present.
Well, another thing on here, which we did talk about in the original joint powers meeting that we all did last fall, was some of the parking that occurs across the street, basically, so I think that would be a good time to kinda have that revisited with them. We had talked to them about, about that, and the potential of-
Across the street from you.
From us.
Here?
Yeah, and potentially identifying their parking lot on the west side of Fifth Avenue West.
Overflow parking.
Well, it's overflow parking, but also, I guess there's no problem, we talked about the meeting, because Grand Portage uses this area here for people that go from town to work in Grand Portage. They park over in the lot across the street, take the bus up, which is a great service. I don't mean to interrupt that, but we talked about the fact that, is it possible to use the parking lot across from the courthouse, which belongs to the county, to use that so that we have more parking spaces available downtown? That might be something that we wanna work on with them as well. It didn't seem to be a problem at that joint meeting. I think everybody was, you know, that was, at the time Norman was there, he didn't seem to have too much objection, but we would revisit it, and I think that it would be a good time before we get to summer to revisit that.
So, in context of the letter, then maybe we just add some language about saying, you know, these three, just a second.
Bless you.
Bless you. So, never just one. It's hiding.
Wait for it.
Yep, yeah, just wait, it'll come back. So we've got these three major agreements, and then we've got other partnerships that we have, you know, this is an opportunity for us to revisit those as well.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if we might try to approach that issue with a different strategy, because it might be easier to deal with than some of these. Some of these are really longer conversations, or maybe potentially difficult conversations.
Or we start with the easiest one that we all get on board with?
I mean, maybe even we could just deal with that at a staff level and have county staff approach the County Board to talk about the potential use of that parking lot, and be happy to talk to Jeff about that.
Okay.
Well, and then, if, you know, if that's the case, then it seems like we should, you know, the city, city council and/or city staff should identify some of those things that, that can be, that could be handled in that manner. Parking, that was definitely one of the things that came up. I mean, we're dealing with the plowing things, and that's good. I can't remember what else came up at that meeting, but largely, if, if, if the council doesn't feel that, that there's anything that needs to be added to this conversation, or to this request, then we can send this out, and then we can expect to, that these would be the main things.
What about Fourth Avenue West above Fifth Street?
Ooh, ownership questions?
I think that that lives very nicely in the street maintenance conversation.
Yeah.
When we've talked about it at a staff level, that issue, it's been kinda kicked back to the bigger conversation of a global understanding of who maintains what and how, and how it's accounted for and paid for, if that makes sense, but it was certainly- But it was certainly our intention to get that figured out during this conversation.
There's a, there's a large amount of people in town, I think, that would like for the two of us to figure that out. And by two of us, I mean the two entities.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Like yesterday, not tomorrow, yesterday.
Or five years ago.
We also have to pay attention to, like that's, that street and the streets in that area, area with, you know, significant rain happening in the spring and we'll probably have a freeze thaw happening. Two is gonna make that street deteriorating faster. Anyway, so I would, I would concur with, with Mike about where that lives with the street maintenance arrangement. That's something that we, we definitely need to identify a solution for as a part of this conversation. So, cool. Anything else that we, we need to consider with this or is this? If we say yeah, then, then Mike will, will clean, clean it up a little bit and then send it out. So, sound good? All right, I'm seeing lots of nodding, nodding of heads. Great. So we'll go ahead and do that and away we go. Thanks Kristen, bye. She needs to go back to Sunday, so.
Yeah.
Surprise she stick around as long as she did.
Well, that was probably of interest to her, that little conversation.
Yeah, I, I probably, yeah.
Street behind the recycling, so.
Yeah. I'm gonna, it's gonna be really, I was thinking about bringing it up, but it wasn't the nature of the, of the request yet. Just to bring it up to her and just be like, what do you think? Because it's kind of catching her, you know, that's not fair.
Well, we've talked about it, I've talked about it with her two previous predecessors too. I mean, it's not been identified as a priority by the council until now. And we don't know if it's a county board priority to, to address that agreement or not. So we'll have to discover that by asking.
I don't know, but our constituents are telling us that they feel it needs to be addressed, so that's where I'm coming from. That's what people are coming to me with, so.
It's in rush. That, that street.
Yeah.
It's in rush.
Well, you don't have to wait for the county.
Not, not to deal with.
Not to do anything with it. Then we can decide what, I mean.
Yeah.
My whole idea here is what, what are you looking at doing to it?
Right. How could, how could we?
Making it drivable, I think.
Well, that's number one, but then are you looking at curb and gutter and all this kind of thing? Are you just looking at trying to make it drivable? I mean, an overlay or cut up what's there, repave it, I mean, I don't know. Right now, it does not have curb and gutter.
No.
What I like about the, the larger conversation starting it is once we've established ownership concepts on it, then we can dig into that strategy. Like, okay, well, what, what do we want it to be? How are we gonna get there?
Well, one of the interesting parts of that conversation could also be with the, you know, half percent transportation sales tax and that money going into county roads. If the conversation about the downtown streets, I mean, we paid for those last time.
Yeah.
We paid for those. There wasn't coming out of county state aid money or it wasn't coming out of any county funds. You know, the same thing with Fourth, Fourth Avenue. If it's a county road, they should maintain it and.
Well, it, it certainly was a county road. There's no doubt about that.
It was.
It probably shouldn't be a county road. That seems pretty clear too. But generally, when a county turns back a city, a road to a city, it has to be done in a certain condition or there has to be some funds allocated towards it. So that's really the conversation, I think. Because I, I doubt that the boards are gonna say, well, we don't really care what happens to it. And I doubt that the county would say, you know, condition whatever. So that, that's, I don't think it'll be that hard to, to get there once we just sit down and talk about it. And put it in the context of the rest of the streets too. And how we're maintaining them.
Well, I'm, I'm, I honestly am just grateful that, that all of us on the council are willing to have that conversation. Because the first time that I've, the first time that I brought that street up to the previous county engineer was, it was met very coolly. And if we're, if we're all interested in finding a solution with this and, and the county engineer and the county commissioner is as well, then we will find a solution and I think that's.
And I think you have different personalities now to deal with than previous, so.
Also remember, it's a county recycling center that uses. Really, it's county recreational facilities. It's a county recreational facility, it's a county recycling center. The entrance to the back half, it's used by, you know, city and county people.
Needs to be built to a certain standard so that it can handle those big trucks and stuff.
Well, that's part of it too, it's against degrading, yeah.
Cool, well, that's great. So you're gonna send that out? We've got some notes. We'll have to, you know, brainstorm a couple of things or two, or maybe that's our homework assignment is to, is to brainstorm concepts for that meeting so that we'll be able to bring, bring things up and make sure that we, that we don't miss something.
I mean, I wouldn't mind, you know, if Mike and Jeff got together before we, you know, council and commissioners got together to have a conversation about kind of the structure and that kind of thing. I mean, that would be maybe beneficial, but something to consider, right?
Well, I mean, Jeff and I have talked a little bit about how this might happen. In, I mean, I told Jeff that the council's position was, they thought some of these other deals probably need to be included in this conversation that we would be contacting them, so that, we're following through on that. Structure moving forward, I guess I'd like to have the county board talk about it themselves first and make sure that they've got some clarity on it. And then beyond that, the council will definitely have to spend a little time establishing some positions. Because, you know, we've said these are issues, but we haven't really said what we want to get out of them or where we want it to be.
Well, you have a list, you have a list of what these, what these agreements are?
Well, I have, actually, there are actual contracts for the three things that we've listed here. Is that something we're gonna go through as a council first to kind of look at things and? I actually think looking at them would be interesting, yeah. But that we're quickly going to move from, we're not gonna spend time trying to fix what's there. It'd be interesting to know what's there, but I think it's more that you need to talk about just what you want this to accomplish and how you want it to work, separate from what's written there. The maintenance agreement is, is decades old and really doesn't help understand how things are done today. The law enforcement agreement's a lot more fresh, but I think there's some particular current issues that we want to put through that thought process and how does it work with this and are we happy with how things are going and we want them to do that too. And then we've already started the conversation about the community center contract. And, you know, I think that one probably has to wait for these other two to start to shake out before we know where we're gonna land on that one.
By community center, are we, we're talking about the YMCA building, not the actual community center?
Yeah.
Correct?
Our, our contract with the county doesn't, like Jeff mentioned, doesn't mention the Y, right? It, it only talks about operating a community center. So that's not calling it that, but yeah, it's about the Y. But is it, is it, what about the other building? Is that county, city, what's the other building? Nope, that's just county.
County.
Okay.
So hopefully what we can.
So it shifted to the Y.
Well.
Not that other, it used to be the other building. We don't, we've not, we haven't had an agreement with them about funding or paying, or doing anything in that other building. Okay, I didn't think so, alright.
It's the, yeah, the concept.
So are you looking at establishing all new contracts or just have a discussion over these old contracts? Well, we know that we need a new contract for the community center slash Y because the old one doesn't match how things are operating right now. I, I would think we want a new contract for street maintenance issues because it's so many decades old, it's just not relevant anymore. And then for law enforcement, I don't know if we need a new contract, but we certainly need to think about it and, and talk about it and make sure it still works for everybody.
Well, and the, the law enforcement one, I think, is going to be dependent upon our number one priority of looking at our ordinances and what are we going to enforce, change, enforce, update, enforce? And how does that then affect them?
And yeah, we're gonna need to have, we're gonna need to gather the, we're going to need to have the sheriff's department as a part of that conversation because they will be the ones enforcing.
Enforcing, yeah.
They need to tell us what is enforceable and what is not enforceable so that we can draft ordinances that are effective and enforceable.
We, we don't know that they'll be the ones enforcing. We want to have the conversation just to make sure that's an option. But could be there as a better option, we just don't know yet.
Cool.
And just, you know, another piece of that, we've, we've listed three things here. The, we went through an exercise a number of years ago when the first county administrator was here where he and I sat down with Brady and Molly and just listed all of the different agreements. Most of them are actual paper agreements, but relationships, other things. And I think we had three pages of notes in a notebook before we were done with that. So, I mean, that, there's a lot more than just these, but this seems like these are covering a lot of the really big things, particularly expensive or, you know, program affecting things. There could be more things that the county wants to bring up and just, here we go.
I do think it's important for us to, to educate ourselves about, about these agreements and potentially the other agreements so that we can continue to, so that we can continue to, to move forward in an educated way. So, we'll have something to do ahead on that one too, that should be good. Okay, so we'll send that out, we'll start the conversations, go from there. Next item on the agenda, you may notice that the memo for this one is quite short. So we had asked for additional information regarding the right of way offers that Mendat had made for city properties and the, the drainage easements that they had requested. We didn't have not received response information about those requests. So we're gonna let this one sit because we, we decided at our last meeting, we didn't feel comfortable making a decision without additional information and we have not received additional information. So, so there we go.
I'm good with it.
I have, yeah.
They can come to us, right?
Well, I mean, there's, there is a time limit in the sense that they probably already have started the eminent domain proceedings on that. If they haven't already, they soon will. That they're gonna do that for a lot of properties where they don't actually finish the eminent domain process, but they actually come to a resolution before that. And I would expect that we will be like that as well. And that really the eminent domain process is only talking about the dollar amount. That's the only variable that we, we get any say in. And that's not our issue. So it's kind of a weird fit, but I'm hoping that we can just get some information.
Well, I think that's what we asked for, is really to get clarification as to what the purpose of that and what the long-term relationship in terms of maintaining that, those drainages.
Yeah, I mean, it's very useful information for us to know, especially if we have a stormwater management plan that, that requests that we, that we take action on those drainages. Because if they, if they, if we need to check everything off of them or they have different expectations than we do, then that's gonna be really a huge pain in the butt for us. So yeah, so we will continue to wait for information from them, hopefully we will get it. On this topic, I've, I've heard from a couple of other people who have made or had right of way offers made to them, have done my best to answer their, answer their questions and, you know, things are moving along. I, I would like to say that they're moving around, along smoothly, but I don't think that that's the best adjective for the, for how things are moving along. But, but things are certainly moving along. So unless there's other comments to make on that, the right of way offers for the city, I believe that we can, we can just table that for the future when we get more, more information from them and move on. Cool? Alright, moving right along. So, it's kind of an unfortunately short report, but oh well. Alright, so we're gonna talk about the golf course superintendent position. So we started the process last year of, of reassessing the golf course superintendent position and, and that process was completed. The ROI system is the fir, the same system that we use to adjust or, or to rate all of our, our positions was used. The old rating was a 163, the new rating was 190, which is a very similar increase to other department head type positions that we have within the city when they were reassessed. That results in a new, a new pay ra, pay range for the position. And the rating itself, we, if you have, if you're curious about that and want to see what was adjusted, I believe that we provided that in an earlier packet, or at least.
I don't think we have.
Okay, well, at least then I, then I know that Kelly and I have seen that because.
What's that?
The, what was adjusted, how they got the additional 27 points in the, in the ROI.
Was, was that a change in the job description that, you know, result, resulted in the change?
Change in, a slight change in the job description and also there are different standard ratings for supervisory positions that weren't reflected in the, in the previous rating. So for a supervisor of X number of employees, the rating would be this certain number. And what was, what it was rated for in previously was much less than that. So then those were adjustments that were just made to bring those up to what our standard for a supervisory position at this level would be. And that, that accounted for quite a few of the, of the points that were in the adjustment, if I remember correctly. So.
And we were given, I went back last night and dug through my stuff. We were given, the council was given the updated job description back on June 21st meeting. So if you wanted to go back, whether online or in our packets, that is there.
And it wasn't, there wasn't a lot of change. The job description was really just refreshed to match kind of how we write them now, but the duties weren't particularly changed and it, and it certainly described what I think most people would imagine the duties are. That this job's responsible for everything that goes on there, so.
Yep. So, I do believe that, that this new rating, we need to accept this new rating, is that correct? So unless there's further discussion needs to be done about, about this new rating for this position, I would entertain a motion to, to approve it at 190 and the new pay range starting at 48,922 extending to 58,698. If there is discussion, we can certainly discuss, so.
I motion to approve the new rating.
Alright, so there's motion, is there a second to this?
Oh, second to that.
Okay, motion and a second. So now I'll open this for further discussion, anybody have anything else they want to say about this?
Yeah, I just, a question just in terms of where this now lies with relationship to the other supervisory positions. You know, I don't have that information, you know, I mean.
We did send that out. The entire rating system was sent out after, I think it was after last meeting, but maybe it was after two meetings ago. But where it lies is it's in the same relative position that it was before. This is the lowest rated of our supervisory positions.
So this goes up from the 163 up to a 190?
Yeah.
Good question. Any other comments or discussion on this? So we have a motion and a second to approve the golf course superintendent position rating. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, alright. So that's kind of the first thing, and then the second thing is a piece of, a piece of work that the personnel committee and city administration has been working on for quite a while, actually. And it's, I think it's a pretty exciting, pretty exciting development. The name Paul Jones may sound familiar. Paul Jones is the gentleman that the city contracted with at the end of, or through most of last season to work on the turf, to make sure that we didn't lose the turf up there at the golf course. And Paul had shown interest in the position applied and, and he, he was, he was a very qualified candidate for what we're looking to do. He has experience and desire to start events going at the, at the golf course and he has shown his, his acumen with the, with the turf itself. So, very similarly to our previous arrangement, Paul will be, he would be a permanent full-time salaried employee and he would be reporting to the Parks Department manager. So then he would be in that, put into that hierarchy under Parks. Considering his expertise with turf and his experience with running courses in the past, that put him at a, at a, a starting wage of 50. that put him at a, at a, a starting wage of 54, 350, and we are hoping, if this is approved by the council, that we can start getting him to be putting some time in to the course very, very soon to start up the early season operations and to put down some, some, put down some, some groundwork so that we'll be ready to hit the, hit the links when, when the grass is ready. So that is the update for that.
Base wage is a jargon word that actually fits into our pay system. That all of our positions, you can see the range that you just recently approved, that range starts at 90% of base and it goes to 108% of base. Normally, someone starts at 90%. After six months or 1,040 hours, they move to 95%. And then after a year or 20, 80 hours, they move to 100% or base wage. So what we're merely saying here is we wanna skip the first year gradual increase and just start them at that base wage.
And, I'm gonna rephrase it so if public's watching, it's not that we wanna skip it, what we're doing is, we are awarding Paul for his experience and abilities that he brings to the job.
He basically has a season's worth of experience working with our...
Well, he has at least that, so we are awarding him based upon his experience to start him off at a higher wage for that versus a newcomer coming in that hasn't done it before would be expected to start at the bottom of that scale, so...
Can, can I just have you explain the process that we got, we used to get to this point of selecting Paul, and making, making a recommendation for Paul? I mean, we, we had advertisements, we have received a number of applications, you've done some interviews.
So, we, we did the advertisements, we got eight applications. Of those applications, we had some incredibly qualified candidates. We, we interviewed a number of them, some of them withdrew their applications, some of them we made off, or one of them we made an offer to, which was not accepted. So then we continued to go back and, and reassess as we, as we were going through the process, and, and, oh my God, everyone's gonna fall in.
It's possible. Yeah, Paul actually entered the process a little late. We had kinda gone through and evaluated candidates and made some decisions about them and ended up without knowing what we were gonna do quite yet. Had a strategy discussed to move forward in the summer, and, and in terms of talking to Paul about that, he said, well, he thought he might be interested in the job, so he applied, and we, we interviewed him, and he's just what we're looking for.
I will, to update everybody here on what the task force has done. When we talked about the golf course, and we've talked about marketing, we've talked about rates, which is set by the Park Board itself, we've talked about what are we really looking for, how to move forward. The most important thing that the, the task force felt was that we found someone who could really take care of the turf, the greens, who had the qualifications to do what needed to be done outside. We've got people that are very interested in the marketing part, thinking we're not marketing enough, but several of us said, before we go gung-ho on marketing, I don't wanna market something that's subpar and not in good shape and have people come and try it out, only to be extremely disappointed and walk away with bad reviews. So we felt like, as far as the task force went, and in having discussions, Dave has brought back to the Park Board and probably to Mike, that we felt it very important that that was the first step in trying to move the golf course forward. I don't know that we believe it's ever going to be a profit-making facility, but we can do better. And through trying to maintain and rebuild what we have outside, then some of the other things can happen with the hospitality pieces, with the marketing pieces, that we would move forward after that. So we felt very strongly that we really needed someone who could take care of the outside, 'cause no matter how nice you are inside, if the outside's not looking good and playable, people aren't gonna come back.
Yeah, and I remember, remember from last fall when we hired him to do the turf maintenance, that he seemed like the guy that was able to do that and report backwards, that he did, did a good job taking care of the turf and bringing it back to at least some semblance of condition, you know?
And I think that also with his experience at other courses, it'll be pretty easy for Paul to, to report to us items that are, you know, vulnerabilities that are golf course, I would say, both with the, with irrigation system and with other, other turf and course conditions that, that are, you know, perennial situations. It should be pretty straightforward for him to, to report on those things, so...
Well, I think it's great that we, we think we found somebody that, you know, will fill, fill the role and bring in some new energy and hopefully, you know, re-energize the, the facility, so...
All right, so, as with all hires, we need a motion to, to hire, or to, yeah, to extend the, the offer to, to Paul Jones as golf course superintendent. Is he interested in doing that?
I would make the motion that we offer the position to Paul Jones.
You want to have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion?
We're, we're really quite pleased about this, you know, Dave and I, and it's kind of a load-off, 'cause it, there's a lot of extra involvement, you know, beyond the extra that we intend to do on a regular basis, to have to operate that place, and to have somebody that we can just count on is a real blessing, so we're happy about it.
Yep, and I, I would also, I think that, that the attention that, that Mike and Dave and...
And Hayden, and Patrick, and Kim, and Sam, and a bunch of other people.
And the members of the, the task force, like all of those people, the energy that's been, that's gone into that, I think that will, at least I hope that we'll, we'll be able to see the benefits of that this next year, of course, so... So then, then there's that, any further discussion?
When did he, um...
Start working after last season?
July?
I think July. It was in the summer? Yeah, mid to late summer. And it was, he was, basically, he was just doing our chemical applications for us, and then he did the, kinda the end of season processes, and he did a few renovation projects for us. And it just, it was very clear to us that he knows what he's doing, so, we're happy.
Cool, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carries. Okay, one last thing, so the library clerk position was open, we, we received a number of really great, really great candidates, many of which had, had scheduling issues with the time that we need a library clerk. So the, the name Tom Knutson might sound familiar to some people. Tom used to be the, the technology guy at the library, and he's interested in, in coming back in the role of library clerk. Different things that are, that are benefits for this is that, Kerry knows how to do this, he's already been trained, and he's, he has, he has an understanding of how the staff there works. So, so that's, that's hopefully gonna be a very good fit. So that is what we're looking for, is a motion to approve the hiring of Tom Knutson for library clerk position at the library, part-time, so...
I make the motion to approve Thomas Knutson as the part-time library clerk.
All right, is there a second for that? I can second that. You guys, I was gonna say, you guys don't have to do all the work.
Well, you're doing most of the talking.
I know.
That's work.
But my name doesn't show up in the, in the minutes very often, because I mean, you guys do all the motions and seconds.
Well, that's true.
I got Tim on every one of the motions so far, so, thank you for that, Tim, for keeping that going.
Well, I almost didn't show up for the meeting tonight, so you would've been running it anyway.
Yeah.
My wife had to go down to do her stuff, so, so I almost went with her, 'cause the weather's supposed to be terrible, but, anyway. So, motion and a second, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Anything further to add to the, to the agenda? We probably should've done that earlier, anyway. So, council and staff reports, so, Greg, what do you got for us, this meeting?
Park Board? Um, let's see, it wasn't a whole lot of, well, we had a, um, as far as golf report, must do that first. This is the park, well, Dave and the park, Park Board, I guess. They kinda tweaked some of the, the rates have been set, I'm pretty sure they've been set now, is that, is that my understanding? There was a few changes.
I meet with Dave tomorrow.
Okay, well, I saw, I saw this before, a month ago, but anyway, there was a couple of changes made, just for, they were talking about shed rental and other things like that, but otherwise, the rates have pretty much been kinda, um, set for 2019 proposed rates, and it's not a lot of really different things in here, other than trying to get new golfers to get up there and try it out, maybe we're gonna do a little bit there, and have some different promotions involved there, and maybe we'll have new things coming out of that now after the new manager gets hired on. The other discussion was, uh, the, there was a letter sent to the Park Board by Todd Miller concerning the music festival. There was some questions concerning the extra day and also the alcohol, how they're gonna run the alcohol thing, I think it, was it fenced in before, and now they're kinda, is that more of an issue with the City Council now?
It's entirely up to the City Council. They'll have to apply for a separate license to do the alcohol, and then we can have that conversation with you.
So for radio waves or something different?
It's for the, that, um, Star of the Noise.
The one that's in Harbor Park.
Oh, in Harbor Park.
So there was some, there was some concern with the board on noise, I guess there was some complaints about that, so they're just trying to get an idea of what kinda speaker system they're using and the hours of operation. I think the hours aren't gonna change, it's always been to 10:00 PM at night, and, I don't know, I really don't, how do you have an outside festival without making noise?
And are people talking about that, or, well, I, I don't know, do you ever hear music at your home, at your place?
Oh yeah, I hear it, but I'm not, it doesn't...
Probably not as bad.
It's summertime, and it doesn't bother me, I just, I just see it as a necessity of living in town, living here, I mean, you're gonna have events at night, whether it's a music festival, or it's Fisherman's Picnic, it's a band on a stage, or...
Like, it depends upon...
So I hear music at 10 o'clock at night from bands outside, on top of the taverns, so I'm tavern, but we have a ordinance.
We hear them at 12:15, and we hear them at 11 o'clock on Sunday nights, which is...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there was just discussion about that, and I think everything went well. There were some members of the, of the, of the Star of the North, they were there, three people were there to just kinda be there for questioning if we had any questions, or if the Park Board had any questions, but, other than that, I think everything went fine.
Cool.
Other than the alcohol part of it, I think they're gonna discuss that with the City Council and how they're gonna handle that.
And you have a lot of discretion about that, the, the idea of fencing it off was something that a council set quite some time ago, when the Suns were talking about doing the bingo tent and having beer outside, and that's what they were comfortable with, and you can decide what you're comfortable with when they come and ask.
So basically, um, that's about it, there wasn't a camper board issue, as I remember.
Cool. Okay, Tim? Boy, you're taking a winner off.
Other things to do. Nothing to replay.
Okay.
Well, I'll give a little brief update from the Planning Commission, the PSC didn't meet.
Well, good, yeah, 'cause I wasn't there, so...
The Planning Commission did meet, and they looked at an RFP to kick off the housing project, and that's been released, and they'll be getting responses at the end of this month for them to look at at their next meeting.
And that would be for the housing project located as part of the Nordic Star?
No, the, the study that we wanna do, to gather some data and then do some brainstorming about how we wanna address housing on ordinance or program level.
All right, good. Super. Kelly?
Um, I will give you guys, Anton's not here, so Mike already has a copy. I met with Greg Wright last week, who is the director of North House, we had coffee together, thank you for sharing with him, that I was interested in discussions. As you know, Greg comes yearly, gives us updates on North House, what they're doing. Last year, we had discussions about extending contracts. Greg was looking, asking us what we wanted to do, because I brought it up at our planning session that we had, that, that has kinda sat unaddressed for the most part since that time. He asked me kinda what I was thinking, if I had anything in mind. He will be coming to talk to us probably in the next month or so, typically is what he does, and I just explained to him kinda what I'm hearing from people. I also am not one to like to leave things totally undone or not answered, which sometimes I know that we have to, but I kinda feel like this fell back, obviously it's not in our six points that we came up with at the planning session, but what we came up with in having our discussion about where they would like to go to, kinda what I'm thinking, and I spoke on behalf of myself as a council person, and I, my suggestion was that we kinda go back and look at what we have in the lease now. Are there things that are working for each of us, are there things that are not working for each of us, if we wanna move forward, and what things do we really wanna talk to them about? One of the things that I think we remember hearing is people were a bit concerned as to their growth and what the city is getting for the property that we rent to them. There's a lot of different pieces to that in here, I think, so I just brought my copy of the lease to share with all of you, to say if you have some time in the next month to take a look at it, educate yourselves, and when Greg comes to give the update, whether we say that we wanna meet again at another time to talk about some things, or if we just simply sit and wait for this contract to run out, I don't know. I don't have suggestions right now, I'm not gonna tell anybody what we have to do or should do, but we kinda thought we would go back, since there has been a change over, to say, what's really here? And is there anything that we, we wanna see different? So, I told Greg that that's what I, we agreed on that, that that's what I would come back and share with all of you, so I have followed through on that, and I feel good about that, that's where we left it at. The other thing I brought along is, 'cause it hasn't moved very far, I went through last night, we had sent these out before, but performance evaluation for the city administrator position, and I would like to see us do something and complete something by the end of May. That gives us some time, this was one that I thought kind of seemed more appropriate because it talks about administrative staff. If you notice in your packet here tonight, we haven't reviewed the points in the ROI system since, is it 2005, I believe?
2005, yeah.
So I think in all fairness, this should be conducted annually by us.
This, not the ROI points.
Right, right. Doing that so that we have a good understanding of together what's happening, what our expectations are of that administrator position, and the person who is filling that role has an understanding of what the council would expect of them. I think that's, people are what our staff are made of, and for me, I have always believed that if you don't have a good relationship with your staff, if you don't have capable people doing jobs and filling jobs and have good dialogue with them, then you're only as good as the weakest member of your team. And so, I, I've talked with Mike, I really would like for us to be doing, as a whole department heads be doing, yearly performance evaluations on their staff, that is a good practice to be doing, it is, it should be rewarding for an employee on some fronts. There should also be discussion about goals going forward, but it's kinda hard to expect everyone underneath the city administrator to have those, and we're not doing it for the city administrator. So, I brought that, something to chew on, I don't know what other people's thoughts are, but I would really like to move forward with this.
Cool.
So that's what I have.
We should, we should sit down and talk about that. As the person... We should, we should sit down, talk about that as the Personnel Committee, and then we can, can figure out a way to move forward on that. Thanks for your attention, Beth. We have, we have a lot of energy going in a lot of different directions.
If you do have any questions about process with that, you may want to talk to Chris as well. He can be a resource for you.
Cool. Consider that fair warning, Chris.
That's all right.
All right. So my meetings, Saturday night, I attended the CCLP, kind of local energy project. Had a, a little information meeting at the library on Saturday night. They had representatives of CCLP there, representatives of the Citizens Climate Lobby and of Arrowhead, Arrowhead Electric. And I was there just to give a brief summary of the Climate Action Plan, what, where we're at with that. And basically just gave a, a brief summary of the work that's been done up to present on that. I've been meeting with Shane Steele, who's the Climate Action Plan Coordinator, and also the Green Steps Coordinator. Green Step Cities is a program that the state of Minnesota has, Minnesota has put together to incentivize or create a reward system for cities that choose to be more environmentally conscious. And Shane is in a, at a point right now with the Climate Action Plan where he's proofing it. We'll be ready to, to have that sent out to, or dispersed to the public for comment within probably the next couple of weeks, which is pretty exciting. One request from, from Shane too, and I'll just read the, the message that he sent me because I didn't have time to, to get it all printed out. But it has to do with the Green Step Cities program. So the Climate Action Plan, the things that we've done in order to put together the Climate Action Plan have just shot us ahead on, on this Green Step Cities program. But we don't really have the time to, to, to be updating all of the databases or all of the database information for the Green Step Cities program itself. Through the Clean Energy Resource Team, which is, it's a state, a state program also, through that coordinator, we've been able to find an intern, a free intern from the University of Minnesota Duluth, who would be willing to give us time over the summer to update the Green Step Cities database with the work that we've done in the past, in the past year, year and a half, and also to, to be able to do some of the, the groundwork for, for how we'll be able to keep up with that better in the future. And that won't cost the city any staff time because it'll actually, what it'll do is it'll actually stretch Shane's time because Shane has a certain amount of money that we were awarded from Lloyd K. Johnson and, and I don't want him spending.
McKnight.
Or McKnight? Is it McKnight? Okay, McKnight. Okay, it's good to get that.
Credit where credit's due.
Credit where credit's due. Yep. So I don't want Shane spending any of that time on Green Step stuff if he doesn't have to. So this intern, they're doing it because it looks good on the resume to work with municipalities. And the candidate that, that has come forward has been vetted by the Clean Energy Resource Team people and seems like very, very capable of what we're going to, what we would like them to do. So if, if, unless the council has some objection to that, then we will tell them to move forward with that intern for the summer. They don't need to be up here. CERTS is going to cover all the, any transportation expenses for them coming up to meet with any city employees. But really, it's going to be us feeding them information and them updating it on the, on the Green Steps database for the city. So.
Is there a charge to us then, or it's totally?
No, it's covered by CERTS and it's, and it's, they're doing it because it's part of their degree program at, at U of G. So it's kind of a win-win situation. So unless somebody has any, has an objection to that, we'll just keep moving forward with having that, that intern help us out for the summer. Cool. Mike and I also sat down and went through the city section on the emergency management plan for the county. It's our year to update that. And Valerie sent us a, a pleading email being like, please, please do this. So we sat down and did that. And really, not much has changed. The plan, when it was originally written, was written really, really very well. So all we have to do is to update it with new resources that we have available. And, and I think that that's, that looks pretty darn good. Jamada also met, I was at that meeting, the area, Grammar Area Tourism Association and distributed the grant monies for, for different programs to be driving new events and, and other things like that. So, so that's all exciting and, you know, going the way it should. And other than that, I, I've, it's been pretty quiet. I haven't heard much from, from people around the city. Oh, I have, I have actually heard from quite a few people saying that, that they've seen my ugly mug on their YouTube quite a few times. So kudos to Patrick for getting the, the video about the RFP out there to touch people so that they know what we're up to. And I have had some people asking me about that, about the RFP. But, but a lot of times they're asking just like, so are you moving the liquor store? And I'm like, nope, we're not moving the liquor, well, you know, we don't know, we don't know what's going on. People that, that work at the liquor store want it to be downtown. So, you know, we're gathering information. We'll see what we can do from there. And, and a lot of, they seem pretty, pretty okay with it, you know. So I think that we need to keep, keep up with the communication. But I think we're, we're starting on the right foot. So, so that's good. Anything from you guys? Nope. Any closing comments? Where's Dave Mills when you need him?
At the county.
At the county.
Yep.
All right. So time is 7:50. We are adjourned.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.